Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, council. I will now ask the clerk to take the roll call, please.
Counselor Mackey, Counselor McKay, Counselor Carlton, Counselor Pringle, Counselor McQueen, Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Dickert, Counselor Kentner, Counselor Kivney, Counselor Body, Counselor Greg, Warden Mill, Counselor Dobreen, Counselor Matrasovs, Counselor Boardingill, Counselor Eccles, Counselor Hutchinson. We have all members in attendance today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Anishnabe, Six Nations of the Grand River, the Haudenosaunee, the Wendat, Waindott, Waindoot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Métis and Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. The first order of business this morning is the adoption of the minutes. We have the County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated June 22 of 23. Someone care to move those minutes? Counselor Dobreen, Counselor Greg seconds? Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Next set of minutes is from the, or are from the C A O Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes, dated July 6 of 23. Someone care to move? Counselor Mackey, Counselor Patterson, any discussion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Next set of minutes are the Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force Minutes dated July 6, 23. Someone care to move? Adoption, Counselor Mackey, Counselor Pringle, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Next minutes are the Committee of the Whole and C A O Performance Evaluation Committee Closed Meeting Minutes dated June 22 and June 29. Someone care to move? Counselor Kivney, Counselor Body, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We have no closed meeting matters related to minutes. The first report is from the Grey Bruce Health Unit, the Board of Health Minutes of April 28 to 23. Is Dr. Era going to be joining us? Do we know? No? Okay. Someone care to move those minutes? Counselor Deckert? Counselor Eccles? Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. The next is the approval of land purchase, Gray Road 19 and Crosswinds Boulevard. Someone care to move that report? Counselor Kivney, Counselor Matrasovs? Michael, you want to speak to that report?
Thank you, Warden. County Council, good morning. I'll be brief. This report is with respect to the purchase of a rectangular parcel of road widening at the intersection of Gray Road 19 and Crosswinds Boulevard at the town of Blue Mountains. Land is required as part of the project to conduct, to construct the roundabout at that intersection. Today's staff are seeking approval pursuant to the acquisition of land procedure for a negotiated purchase of this land. It's been negotiated in accordance with that procedure, which requires final approval from County Council. The parcel to be obtained is approximately 0.191 acres in size, runs the full width of the parcel frontage of the land immediately, but abutting the roundabout location. It extends to the minimum depth required to construct the roundabout. These terms are in accordance with direction that has been given by County Council with respect to this acquisition. That said, I should note that direction was also given at, through the last meeting of Committee of the Whole, which was just ratified, which may have required expropriation of a smaller section of land, which represented the minimum roundabout footprint, very similar to this parcel, but a crescent-shaped piece. However, a negotiated purchase has been reached with the landowner, and so we are seeking approval for that today. The additional land beyond the crescent-shaped piece has been identified as it may facilitate construction of utilities and relocation of utilities around the roundabout.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions regarding that report? Not seeing any. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Michael. The next report is a motion for consideration related to the updated financial impact assessment for the Rockwood Terrace Project as presented to the Long Term Redevelopment Committee on July 6. So could I have someone move the receiving of Counselor Carlton, Counselor Eccles? Mary Lou, good morning. Sorry, we need to vote on the two-thirds. We need two-thirds vote to reconsider. For this motion? Okay, so as I understand it, we just need a simple majority to consider this motion. The actual motion to reconsider will be next. Right. Perhaps I'll get the clerk to express what she's talking about, rather than me try to interpret it after not hearing half of it.
I apologize if I'm losing my voice a little too, which doesn't help. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So through you, the current motion on the floor is a suggestion from staff in order to keep the Rockwood Terrace Project moving along in good time. If you were to consider passing this resolution, which would allow you to reconsider the earlier motion passed from March 23, 2023, which established the upset limit for the Rockwood Terrace redevelopment project. So should this pending motion pass, Mary Lou will provide a presentation on that updated project scope, and then the resolution to be reconsidered can be considered after her presentation.
And we only need a simple majority for this motion. So are there any questions regarding what we're voting on? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. So now the next motion then, which will allow Mary Lou to describe what we're proposing or what the committee is proposing. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Mackey, second, Counselor Dickert? We need two-thirds for this one, correct? Or will Mary Lou, okay, Mary Lou's going to describe what the impact is, and then we'll vote on that. Mary Lou?
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So we're here to discuss today an updated costing as part of the redevelopment task force committee report that was heard last week. So the purpose of the presentation is to provide an update on that costing based on the revised scope, the status of ministry funding, the borrowing required, and to talk a little bit about the increase to the net levy in the 2024 to 2026 budgets. So as you're all aware, when we discussed this the end of March, in order to reduce the project cost, we reduced the scope, which Colliers was asked to come back and take a look at costing based on the removal of the village square and the assisted living that would focus on redevelopment of 128 beds. And as a reminder, Rockwood Terrace currently has 100 beds. As a result of looking at the project and reducing the building footprint, it pulled the building forward on the site, which allows for reduced stormwater facilities and grading. And so the cost was reduced to 96.7 million, and my apologies on the 108 million refers to like to borrowing. The Class B estimate that was provided the end of March was 125.7 million. So it's a 23.1% reduction. The target we were given, March 23rd, was 92 million, and so we're currently within 5% of that and in looking at 96.7% as provided by Colliers. Sorry, 96.7 million as provided by Colliers. And just to comment here on interest rates, so interest rates yesterday from Infrastructure Ontario, so they've gone up 0.44% for a 25-year debenture and 0.27% for construction loans since the March presentation. When we look at budget project risks, there are, of course, significant change orders or unforeseen risks associated with any build of that size and scope. Interest rate increases. You know, two months ago, they didn't predict a 25 basis point increase yesterday. That we would estimate, the estimated reserves would be depleted earlier than planned. Currently, we're withdrawing just about $9.3 million in the budget this year, which takes that reserve down to about $400,000, less the commitments that have been made in the last redevelopment meeting where we would do some of the site work, additional costs, and then we will go and with the early works project that Randy brought a report forward on that has been approved, we'll finance that internally until we go out for a construction loan, and we would anticipate that occurring in early 2024. Risk with D C collection being less than forecasted, that'll increase financing requirements. The D C background study provides about $5.6 million in development charges that could be allocated to this project. In 2022, just about $992,000 was collected for long-term care. Also, an impact is higher demand in the early stages for construction financing. So what that means is we do our best estimates to identify the cash flow that we're going to be paying out to the various contractors and support companies, and the earlier that we pay more money, then we're going to need the construction financing, which in turn increases our interest payments. Just to talk a little bit about Ministry of Long Term Care Redevelopment Funding. So that provides just over $1 million a year or 25.1 million over 25 years to assist with redevelopment. There was additional construction fund subsidy that was offered for projects that could start construction by the end of August. No indication has been provided that there will be an extension to the August deadline. And as you're aware, the county continues to advocate for an extension through A M O. How we fund a project? So as mentioned, the construction loan will finance the project until it's ready to be converted into a debenture. So under a construction loan, you pay interest only, and then once we issue the debenture, that'll be a principal and interest payment that becomes a levy requirement. And the term that we've used for 25 years matches up with the length of time the province provides construction subsidy. Gray County can access funds through Infrastructure Ontario, which is a several-month process. Any borrow beyond 25 million has to go to their board of directors. And the loan application in order to begin moving through the process requires a borrowing bylaw that is approved by council. The current project estimate is 96.7 million. Based on what we have in reserves and the development charges, the current estimate is we would borrow around 77.6 million. An annual debenture payment, principal of interest of $5.3 million, based on the 76, 77.6 million dollars would be required. The ministry funding, as I've mentioned, is just over a million. And that reduces the net levy requirement to 4.3 million. That payment is calculated based on a 25-year term with a 4.75% interest rate. And just to summarize, the interest on the debenture payment is 55.8 million dollars. Also, as a comment, as increasing the number of residents and a larger building footprint will increase the operating costs. And some of that will be offset. There will be additional revenue based on the additional 28 residents. When we look at how much we can borrow, Gray County's debt management policy says we shouldn't exceed 10% of our own source revenue, and that's based on our internal and external debt. The provincial limit is 25%. And the 25% is $17,557,213. At our own policy at 10%, 10% comes out to $8,089,017. And after I take into account internal debt, that's $7,243,821 remaining. So based on current commitments, we could borrow approximately another $42.3 million. We've got a dollar sign there. I thought I changed that at 4.75% for 25 years. The current levy contribution for redevelopment is $1,361,000. This will need to ramp up over the 2024 to 2027 budgets to cover construction loan interest payments in 2024 to 2026 and to fund the debenture payments that'll begin in 2027. Next steps. If council approves the upset limit of 96.7 million, we will be working with Infrastructure Ontario to complete a loan application and to advise Colliers that the upset limit has been approved. This would result in going to tender in late fall for a spring 24 construction. And as I've mentioned previously, we would be delegating at A M O for another round of construction fund top-up. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Are there any questions regarding the presentation? Counselor Nielsen?
Thank you, Warden Mill. I do have, I think, a couple of questions. My first question is during discussions on when we revised the limit to the 92 million, that was taking into account the information that we had at the time, adding in a 10% construction cost wiggle room. What was the explanation given for why their costing is coming in at four and a half million dollars more than our estimate?
Good morning, counsel, and thank you, Counselor Nielsen, for the question. The 92 million dollars was a target that we provided to our consultants. I don't, there had not been at that point any real detailed work undertaken to determine exactly what it was that could be removed that would take us to that place. So we used the, as staff, used the information that we had available to provide a target that we thought was going to be a stretch, but hoped that it would be achievable. I think we are still very hopeful that the early works tender will provide some further relief to the county as far as what costs are. And we won't know that until the end of August, when that tender closes and we have an opportunity to to review the bids that we get. So much of what's in this bid is costs that that really don't change, no matter what we do. If you're going to build this, you are going to service it. You are going to manage your stormwater. There, you know, there are a lot of costs that are fixed, and the other challenge is, and we saw this in the earlier discussions from Colliers, that you know, inflation, while it's come down, continues to impact us. So you know, the costs, you know, you're running fast to maybe in some cases, just try and keep up. So I hope that helps.
Thank you very much for that, C A O Wingrove. Just a follow-up then. The 96.7 million dollars is an estimated cost because we haven't gone to tender. What is the difference in doing this process now, setting a budget at 96.7, we go to tender, tender comes back higher or lower than this amount? Do we then have to come back to this committee to make another decision whether or not we're going up or down? Or sorry, above, because if we're saying we have an upset limit of 96 and they come in less, well then, hooray for us. Why wouldn't we wait till we go to tender to see what the tenders are coming in and then make this decision as to whether or not we're going to find any difference between the upset limit and the tender amount?
The process that the province has laid out for us does require council to make decisions kind of at a timely way throughout the process. They they are looking for this confirmation from council at this stage, that you're behind the project and that you're looking to move forward. As Mary Lou said, we need to have confirmed our financing in order to close the big tender at the end of the year. So you know, all of these things are kind of interrelated one to another, and so that's why we're looking to that. And I think overall, the thing that we're most concerned with and pushing hard for is being able to demonstrate to the province that we're moving forward as expeditiously as we can with this project. We're very, very close to that end of August timeline that the province was originally looking for, for the construction funding top-up. And we would very much like to be able to tell them, you know, we're so close. Is there not a way that you could continue to see your way clear to provide that additional funding?
I think also it would very much strengthen our hand at the delegation to A M O if we can demonstrate that council is firmly behind this project. Was it Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. And through you, the construction subsidy that Kim, that you spoke to, that we have the A M O delegation, I know Advantage Ontario, who represents a number of municipal homes, this isn't an issue that's only for Gray County. There's many other homes throughout the the province that could really use this construction subsidy. So it's not Gray County alone, you know, asking for this. There's many homes that could potentially be in jeopardy if it's not for this construction subsidy. Mary Lou, could you just again, tell us what that construction subsidy would be if we were successful in getting it, please?
For you, Mr. Warden. If, so there's two components. It's $35 per diem, per bed. So they would allow you to take $15 of that upfront, and that reduces your borrowing costs. They do discount it by net present value because you're taking it early. So that would give us about $10,400,000 to reduce the amount we went to venture. And the remaining $20 gives us $434,400 a year, or $23,360,000 over the 25 years. So you're looking at over $33 million in total over 25 years.
Well, that is certainly significant. And as you said, Mr. Warden, you know, to put us in a spot that we have a stronger argument at A M O makes complete sense because that's not chunk change that Mary Lou just talked about. That would make a huge difference on the overall debt that the county is going to incur. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey. Any other questions? Counselor McQueen? And then Counselor Dobreen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and to to discuss the part around the interest rate. So the 4.75, is that as up this morning? Because I know interest rates went up a quarter percent yesterday, or is that prior to yesterday's for Infrastructure Ontario?
For you, Mr. Warden. The rates for Infrastructure Ontario yesterday were 4.79% for a 25-year debenture and 5.26 for a construction loan.
So that's reflecting that quarter percent that would have came out yesterday? Through you?
The calculations that are in this report, I used four and three quarters. So it's quite close.
So following up on that, I know that there's a lot of discussion around interest rates and raising, but they're also saying there's an 80% chance that interest rates are going to go up another quarter percent in September. So I guess the question is, is where is it going to stop? Because we're at, and I'm only asking this objectively, and I know, Mary Lou, you asked that as well in the past. So I guess that's something that we have to keep in mind is, is where is that side going to stop? And as, I don't know what each quarter percent equals in a sense of cost of borrowing over 25 years, but I'm sure substantially. So just as a note, thank you.
Counselor Dobreen?
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, County Council, and thank you for the report. There's a lot to absorb with all of the moving parts, and I appreciate the education. I was just wondering, separate from all the financial aspects of it, with the removal of the village square and the assisted living, which had been the plan to help pay for some of this, and the movement of the building forward, it was mentioned, does that prevent anything being added at a future date? Adding back the assisted living or the market rents or, you know, having private structures? I was just thinking future.
I think when we looked carefully at the, at the numbers, it became clear that the assisted living would not be a net positive revenue piece. So while there was, you know, we looked at it as a service and something that the county could do to extend the work that it already does to a population that, you know, that's a service that's in need, but it really wasn't. When we actually ran the numbers, it really wasn't going to be something that made any kind of significant contribution to the, to the bottom line. As far as the ability to do more work on the site, there are a number of considerations around that site plan and other work. I, I don't think that this site is one that has capacity to add much more to it. But the county does have the 20 acres on the other side of Rock Street, and we've through the changes that have been made here, have been able to keep that parcel whole. Whereas in the earlier version of the site plan, there was a really extensive stormwater works on the other side of the road, which compromised that parcel a little bit. So now we've eliminated that. So there's an awful lot of options, I think, that we'll be able to talk about in the future as far We'll be able to talk about in the future as far as what could happen with that twenty acres and how that might be redeveloped to support people as well. Anne Marie did get some additional information about the current Rockwood Terrace and. Things that we might think about for that post twenty twenty six when it's then vacant.
And as the committee will recall. Jennifer was asked the question. Will the reduction in costs that we're are being proposed here, we see here? Will that affect? The quality of the long term care facility itself? And Jennifer assured us that no, it will not. And I think we need to bear in mind that that, at the end of the day, is our ultimate goal, is to. Provide excellent services to our long term care residents. So. Just thought I'd remind everybody of that. Any other questions? Councillor Gray.
Thanks, and through you, Warden, some good questions, particularly councillor Nielsen. I. Asked somewhat the same at the committee meeting. It it's noted in the minutes that there was a vote of record. I'll ask for a vote of record again at this time as well, please, Chair. But my concerns start with just the amount of information that council and committee's been provided. If you had went through that document, it was a five page document which included a header page. There's an agenda page, a timeline, an update and value engineering results, and an overview of decisions taken to date. And for a ninety two million dollar project, I just don't find that sufficient. It was noted that that was direction provided from the last council here. But I did not sit on that council. This is new council. We redid our city hall several years ago. I believe it was approximately eight point eight million dollars, six point six, I think, was construction. Two hundred thousand dollars was moving. I think we could spell it down. Right about down to the ledger account, but I am not comfortable. At providing a further ceiling up to ninety six point seven million dollars beyond the ninety two million dollars. It's already been provided. I support the comments that councillor Mackey's made. It's not chump change, the CFS funding, but. Province has budgeted for that in this budget year. That's already been budgeted for, and if you're doing a prudent job of budgeting, they will live up and they'll acknowledge that. They just won't pull that out from under me. Under municipalities that are building these homes. Those funds have been set aside by the province. They haven't guaranteed it yet, but I'm confident that we can still. Prudently move ahead, considering those funds will be acknowledged and and forwarded back as we move forward on this. But. Given the amount of information or the vagueness and the lack of transparency yet in the documents, that's why I'm not comfortable. Moving forward myself. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Greg, and I truly appreciate your optimism that the the province will do what they say they're going to do. I truly do. Councillor Wingrove, or CEO Wingrove.
So with regard to the details of the costing. The discussions that we've had throughout this process are that we are trying to protect. The confidentiality and the integrity of the tender process. That if we provide, if we disclose publicly. Every detail of how the ninety six point seven million dollars was arrived at. It will be very difficult to expect that we'll receive a multitude of of competitive bids. Because you've put those numbers out there in the public realm. That's the advice that we were given by our consultant. And this is the process that I'm familiar with, happening in in other jurisdictions. Our project manager, Andrew, did tell the task force, the redevelopment task force last week. That what we're looking at here is five hundred dollars a square foot. And I think that. Given where we've been through the years and what, you know, inflation has done to every kind of project and then every years that. We're in a solid place. And this is a significant reduction, as Mary Lou said, from where we were earlier.
Councillor Mattressaw.
Thank you. Through the chair and as the the chair of this particular task force. I I do, I I do hear the comments from councillor Greg that that I too am new at this council. Fifty percent, half of us are new. So. Yeah, you know, I definitely spent a lot of time going back through the previous minutes and and familiarizing myself with what had gone on and the decisions that were made with the previous council. But I do think that in the term of this new council thus far, we made a prudent decision. To do something that we didn't want to have to do, but we did pull back on the village square and on the assisted living, you know, something that that's so very much could provide some public good. But we were careful about our spending and said, okay, well, let's let's. Pull it back and concentrate on what we really need to continue to deliver. This is not the only community service project, the only community build in any of our communities that is experiencing these escalating costs. That we're we're all that, we're we're all. Becoming disappointed in our own communities about other builds that we would like to do that are not coming in the way that we can. My concern is that if we if we start losing our step with what the the funding is provided on the upper to on the upper levels. That we will get even further back behind. And I think we parsed it down to the absolute. Minimum that we can provide our residents by saying, yes, we need to continue with these these long term care beds that we desperately need here. And so I support the fact that we are, yes, unfortunately, it's inched up again. But this is not the only project in Gray County that is going through that kind of struggle. Thank you. Chair.
I will remind council that we do have the opportunity to go in camera to discuss the details of the. Ninety six point seven number, if council desires that. But there's a process the clerk will. Walk us through to do all that, but it it is an option if somebody feels strongly that want to do that. In the absence of that, I'm asking if there's any further questions on the motion in front of us. Okay, not seeing any. I'll ask the clerk. A recorded vote has been requested. I'll ask the clerk to do that. So again, the clerk is going to tell us rather than tell me exactly what's what is going to be voted on here. Sorry, councillor Nielsen, go ahead.
Thank you, Ward Mill. I'm trying to ponder the ramifications are going into closed session, what that's going to take. Part of my, you know, hearing councillor Greg and and the same thoughts that are running through my head. You have a significant scope of a project that. I thought I had an understanding of what the premise was with the ninety two million. I'm having a hard time understanding what the change was. And where we're where we're headed in terms of what does this? What the scope change looks like. We were presented with a layout, a map, and an understanding of the original scope. We've asked for a change in scope, but as a group here, we haven't had a chance to see. How that level has changed, what is the change in the site, what is the change in the size of the building and stuff. So I'm trying to understand. And I'm I'm not wanting to delay the process in terms of driving everybody through an hour's conversation just to get information that. Might not be needed, but I'm trying to see is there other interest in getting more and more information? There's a part of me that says it's worth going into the close to have an understanding of what this is project is looking like. But I'm kind of looking to my table to see if there's anybody who's on the same page as me. I don't want to drag us through information if nobody else wants to.
Very good. Any other? Comments? Not seeing any, so. Madam Clerk, could you walk us through what exactly we're going to be doing here?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, so just a recap of where we currently sit right now. The motion on the floor is the. Original motion for March of twenty twenty three that directed staff to communicate the offset project. Limit of ninety two million dollars for the redevelopment of Rockwood Terrace. That's the current motion on the floor. Options for council to consider at this time are to amend that. Subject to the reconsideration motion that was passed prior. To amend that ninety two million to a different number. Staff's recommendation is ninety six point seven. Alternatively, should you wish to go in camera, there is no in camera. Item on this agenda, so we would simply need to amend the agenda, add that item to it, and then we could proceed in camera at that time.
So we need an amendment to change the ninety two million to another number. Staff's recommendation is ninety six point seven. So if someone is so inclined to make that amendment. I would entertain that now. Councillor Mackey? You're making the motion to amend.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Yes, I'll make the motion to amend the ninety two million to ninety six point seven million as recommended by the staff.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Councillor Mattressaw is seconding that. So the amendment is on the floor now to change the number from ninety two to ninety six point seven. Councillor Gray.
I would just, I would just ask for a vote of record on that amendment as well, please.
So further to your question, councillor Nielsen, I would direct council to the minutes of the June fifteenth. Redevelopment Task Force meeting. There are a number of presentations made at that task force meeting. One of which was from Kasean, our architect, where they provided. All the site plan. Changes as well as walking everyone through the alterations that that they'd made. So. That is available to to folks if if you're interested in, again, if if you want, we can, we can bring that up and. And go through it for everyone's benefit. But, you know, basically, as you said, it was the elimination of of that. Front part of the building, which then allowed the building to come down. They reworked the parking on the site, and actually, I think it's a big improvement from where we started. And by reworking the parking, then we were able to rework the stormwater management. As well, Jen and her team went through furniture fixtures and equipment with a fine tooth comb. To be able to determine, you know, if there's any opportunities to reuse existing materials or assets from. The home that's the province makes that pretty limited because when they come to evaluate. The new home for occupancy, they expect to see a fully operational new home. So. Promising that you're going to move stuff from A to B doesn't really cut it for them. They want to be able to see that you've got everything. Exactly how it's going to be on the day that the residents move in, in order for them to provide the occupancy license.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions on the amendment? Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Warden. And through you, I'd just like to comment on on those comments and and I I accept them and. Appreciate them, but I would. Place out there, I was part of that meeting and that June fifteenth meeting, and I would, I mean, the the chair's the chair. It was generally acknowledged that that was not the meeting where we were going to delve into the the pricing details. That would be. Provided at the subsequent meeting, which is the minutes within contained here. So I would challenge. That we had the ability to get into pricing or some more of the details at that June meeting. It was somewhat acknowledged that that wasn't going to be the form. It would be the July meeting and and then I stand by my earlier comments. Thanks.
So for clarification, at the time the June fifteenth task force minutes took place, we did not. Our Colliers had not yet received the class B cost estimate, cost estimate from the cost consultants Turner and Townsend. And so it's since that time that we do have the updated numbers from Turner and Townsend. So just to be clear, this, these numbers aren't coming from. Anyone who's in any way affiliated with the project. They don't come from staff. They don't come from Colliers. They don't come from Kasean. Turner and Townsend is a third party cost consultant used by. Many municipalities and certainly in Osimco County uses them, and it's their job to take a look at. The details of a project and come back with what they believe is costing based on. Their extensive knowledge of what's happening in the marketplace. So that ninety six point seven number is the one that comes from the cost consultants. That has engaged by Colliers to provide that information to council.
Any further questions, comments on the amendment? Not seeing any, I'll ask the clerk to take. Take the poll.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just to confirm, the recorded vote is on the motion to amend the motion to increase the. Project upset limit to ninety six point million dollars. Sorry, ninety six point seven million dollars. Councillor Mackey? You don't need to use your microphone.
You don't need your microphone.
Councillor Mackey is in favor. Councillor McKay? Councillor McKay is opposed. Councillor Carlton? Councillor Carlton is in favor. Councillor Pringle? Councillor Pringle is opposed. Councillor McQueen? Councillor McQueen is opposed. Councillor Nielsen? Councillor Nielsen is in favor. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patterson is in favor. Councillor Dickert? Councillor Dickert is in favor. Councillor Kentner? Councillor Kentner is in favor. Councillor Keveney? Councillor Keveney is in favor. Councillor Body? Councillor Body is in favor. Councillor Greg? Councillor Greg is opposed. Warden Mill?
In favor.
Warden Mill is in favor. Councillor Dobree? Councillor Dobree is in favor. Councillor Mattressaw? Councillor Mattressaw is in favor. Councillor Boarding Yo?
In favor.
Councillor Boarding Yo is in favor. Councillor Echols? Councillor Echols is in favor. Councillor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Councillor Hutchinson is in favor. That motion carries seventy four to twenty two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we are back to the original motion as amended. And a recorded vote has been asked for on this one as well. Is that what I understood? Yes? Any questions on the amended motion or comments? Not seeing any, I'll ask the clerk to take the poll on this one.
Councillor Mackey? Councillor Mackey is in favor. Councillor McKay? Councillor McKay is opposed. Councillor Carlton? Councillor Carlton is in favor. Councillor Pringle? Councillor Pringle is opposed. Councillor McQueen? Councillor McQueen is opposed. Councillor Nielsen? Councillor Nielsen is in favor. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patterson is in favor. Councillor Dickert? Councillor Dickert is in favor. Councillor Kentner? Councillor Kenner is in favor. Councillor Keveney? Councillor Keveney is in favor. Councillor Body? Councillor Body is in favor. Councillor Greg? Councillor Greg is opposed. Warden Mill?
In favor.
Warden Mill is in favor. Councillor Dobree? Councillor Dobree is in favor. Councillor Mattressaw? Councillor Mattressaw's in favor. Councillor Boarding Yo?
In favor.
Councillor Boarding Yo in favor. Councillor Echols? Councillor Echols in favor. Councillor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Councillor Hutchinson is in favor. That motion carries seventy four to twenty two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, council. Good discussion. Moving on, we have three bylaws to consider. We do them all at the same time? Yes, we do. So all three are there for your consideration. Would someone care to move the by the acceptance of those bylaws? Councillor Carlton and Councillor Pringle? Any discussion? Not hearing any. All of those in favor? That is carried. News and celebrations. Councillor Body?
It blink. There we go. Now it's blinking. Just before I start, I know. Andrew's going to be talking, I think, in a while about the Great Lakes Cities Initiative. We read our land acknowledgement here. They did in Chicago. Chicago, they referred to the Anishinaabe people, the Ojibwe, the Potawatomi and the. And the Odawat, the same as here, that's one heck of a territory. To be running around without a train, without a plane, without a, with a canoe, it's phenomenal. Along that line, on Friday, June twenty-third, here next door at the court. They held the very first, the official opening of the Galadu Court. You know, on sound, Michael is in attendance, I was in attendance. Galadu is a G A L D U E is named after a person that from B C that went to the Supreme Court of Canada. In nineteen ninety-nine advised, that advises the law court should consider. Indigenous offenders' background to make sentencing decisions according accordingly. So there's been a Galadu Court. For a few years, this is the fourth one in Ontario, which is pretty impressive. Years ago, when I still practicing criminal law, I had the luck of. Of talking Judge Marnol and the Crown into allowing a sentencing circle for adults up at. Up at Cape Croaker and it was phenomenal. You can come into a courtroom and. Feel isolated as as an accused person. The case against you is already typed up, it's already there, it's on paper. You can look at your own lawyer, you can look at the Crown, you can look at the judge and and say what. You want to say and and be defensive and and not be honest. In a traffic circle with your peers around you and with your elders that you respect around you. And with the feather being passed, you don't dare lie. It's a whole different way. It's relationship building. That sentencing circle that I went to. Was a domestic that was going badly in the wrong direction. And what came out of it was what had really gone on the the day of the event. And what had gone on before that and what had gone on since. And it was relationship building and relationship healing and it was. An amazing, amazing thing for me to attend. So starting a Galadu Court here is pretty, pretty important, I think, for for our region. And credit and thanks goes to Judge Marnol and the late Crown Attorney Peter Legge that that fought for this and. And got it going. So it will be a table instead of a courtroom, there'll be the judge sitting at it, it will be less formal. There'll be a discussion around it that will help solve the problems. Certainly, when the Young Offenders Act changed to. I'm, I'm forgetting the exact what it became, Scott can help me out with that. That principle of restorative justice was was put into legislation into statute to. Help youth try and stay out of the criminal justice system and going the same way. So this is a a very big step, it was nice to see Crown Attorneys or or. Provincial court judges, federal court judges. Justices of the peace in the room from the region to support this. So it it's, I I think a big step forward for our community in our region. Along the same line, a couple days later, you know, on sound, we put up our very first Maytee flag. The Maytee have been in this region since seventeen hundreds up to three hundred years. They were excluded from treaties because they weren't part of the Anishinaabe. Community at that time. But they, they weren't, they were French, they weren't, they weren't Indian, they weren't Indian, they weren't French, they weren't anything. But yet they've been here and when you hear some of the names in the community. Like Couture, of course Logan Couture playing in NHL is. From on sound and part of the Maytee heritage. Hilliers, Bullshops, there's so many names in this community that we've just lived with and not recognized, so it's pretty. Pretty nice to move forward with the Maytee organization. They don't have the same treaty rights, but they do have rights to. To be consulted with by a Supreme Court of Canada decision. I note that the Maytee fish fry will be this Saturday down at Hibu Conservation Area. Again, there was once. A town down there called. The French Village. Around that area, which is now Hibu, that was where great, 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 great grandfather Couture actually resided where he fished, where he taught. Tom Thompson, how to canoe, how to boat, it's phenomenal, like all these ties that come in. So that's coming up this Saturday, July fifteenth at one P M. And we're happy to build relationships with the Maytees, so it isn't just sort of a. Lost word that's in our recognition or land acknowledgement that doesn't mean anything. Also that week, we were very pleased to attend a presentation at the Nuclear Innovation Institute on isotopes. And we've been meeting with the community members within On Sound that are involved in the isotope business. So an isotope. There's a host isotope. That is going into the nuclear reactor. And being. Being radiated. And then sent around the world and it's phenomenal stuff. A little host container that's about that size holds, hosts, holds a hundred to two hundred treatments. It's got about a five-day shop life that it's got to get to Germany to be processed. And then about five days to get out of Germany to go around the world to be, to be implemented into the human body. Right now, if you've got cancer, you're likely to get surgery and or chemo or both. They can attach this, get it to the hotspot, the one that they're doing right now in. I'm gonna stick for the name, does matter, they're doing right now over at Bruce Power. They can get it into the, into the liver or into the prostate, right into the tumor. And it radiates or de-radiates, whatever the proper phrase is. And it eliminates the need for chemo, which can go weeks and cost millions and make people so sick and has the potential of killing them. Can remove surgery. It's phenomenal stuff. Canada is a leader. At, at nuclear isotope medicine. There is the Canadian Nuclear Isotope Council to put out a report called Isotope for Hope. Encourage everyone to go and read it and look at it. It talks about how Canada can continue to lead and how we can become bigger in the world and and more important. And eventually get our own processing facility here instead of, instead of in Germany. Within the re, region, there's companies that are. Framatome, Kinetrix, come together as isogen, there's something with Boston and that's about to do second isotope. That's taking advantage of the can-do reactor at Bruce Power. We've got a regional opportunity here, so after discussions with with players. City of On Sound has joined the Nuclear Innovation Institute and the Canadian. Nuclear in a isotope council. To try and regionalize this and take advantage of this and set up a southwestern Ontario coalition that will be looking for. Other municipal players, health players, industrial players to come together. And work together and take our little bits, little components that we can offer and work together as a coalition. To take advantage of the real, the, the. The research that's going on at Western, it's going on at McMaster, that's going on at Toronto. And use it with our local hospital, with our local college. Hold all together and build this and become a world leader and take advantage of the opportunity that's here. So we've started, we're putting together the memo of understanding, we will hopefully be including the Saugina Ojibwe Nation as. The fourth co-chair to start this off. And move forward, it's going to be, you know, important for the health of our community, it's going to be important for medicine, it's going to be important for economic development and it's. It's a great opportunity that we're very pleased to be involved with and leading, so at some point we'll be back looking for support of the county and. And those around the table. Thanks.
Thank you, Ian. And again, both of those topics demonstrate the innovation. Of the Grey Bruce region. Live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Very much truth words. Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. This past Monday, there was an important announcement from the Ontario Minister of Energy, Mr. Todd Smith, in relation to the T C Energy Project. So I just wanted to share one paragraph of that. The Minister of Energy has directed the independent electricity system, as we know as ISO. To conduct a final assessment of the Ontario Pump Storage Project and the Marmara Pumped Hydro Storage Project. To validate their roles in Ontario's electricity system. The ISO will provide their analysis on both projects to the ministry by September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In parallel, the Minister of Energy will launch public consultation on Ontario's Regulatory Registry. And the Environmental Registry of Ontario on the potential to rate regulate pump storage projects by the Ontario Energy Board. Following the forty-five day public consultation period and after reviewing ISO's analysis. It is expected that the Minister of Energy will make a final determination on advancing Ontario Pump Storage by November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So we see this as very positive news and moving this project forward, and I just wanted to make sure everyone here was aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Exciting news. Absolutely. Anyone else? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess Mr. Smith was busy this week, you know, further to that. There was the announcement in regards to the pre-consultation work that's going to be done for a new nuclear plant at at the Bruce, the first one since nineteen ninety-three, so. A new nuclear plant up here would be huge for this area and certainly we all know that Gray County and Bruce County both. Are are recipients of all the the money that funnels into the area because of those nuclear plants, so. That's, that's good news going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. It seems rather small to announce that Killstith area has a new playground going in that will be opening up for all the families, but. It, that's part of what will create community there, so immediate release will be coming out later today on that. Thank you.
If you're six years old, that's the piece of news you wanted to hear this morning. Anyone else? Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and County Council, and just iterate that we did the Todd, the side turning for our. Or for the new school, Markdale, when everybody was at Hogs Falls, and that's why some of us couldn't be there, and I saw your picture in the paper there, Mr. Warden. But from that, we did do a presentation at our last council meeting. And during lunchtime for the hospital and the proceeds from the Ram Rodeo. And I'm happy to say that there was fifty thousand dollars raised this year that goes toward the hospital foundation in Markdale and. And this is our third year and everybody had a great time and fifty thousand dollars is put in achievement, so I just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you, Counselor McQueen, and congratulations on that, that's phenomenal, excellent. Anyone else? I will just note that at our last council meeting, it was announced that, or we celebrated the fact that Ray Robertson would be inducted into the Ontario Hall. Agricultural Fame. In fact, Ray is also going to be in Charlottetown later this fall to be inducted into the Canadian. Egg Hall of Fame, so congratulations to Ray. Anyone else? Okay, I take a motion to adjourn our council meeting. Counselor McQueen. Second by Counselor Patterson. All in favor? That is carried. We will be starting our committee of the whole meeting. No, 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 I, no, I thought that likely the, the word, the confusion laid, so. And we're excited to hear from you, so don't worry, we will, we will. But let's take, if anybody wants, let's take a, say a ten-minute recess, we'll reconvene at quarter past eleven. And we'll continue on with our committee of the whole meeting.